Tonight is the pre-town meeting for the Templeton Advisory Committee. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and read this statement. The Templeton Advisory Committee regular business is being broadcast live on TCTV Channel 8 and the TCTV YouTube channel. Responses will be made to comments in the TCTV YouTube channel as time permits. The agenda and meeting materials for this business meeting were posted to no later than forty-eight hours prior to the scheduled meeting, in accordance with Commonwealth of Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws. The Chair reserves the right to add items to, remove items from, or change the order of the agenda. However, the agenda is posted in advance to give the committee and public time to review the agenda items and to ensure the meeting runs within the allotted timeframe. At this time, if we could all rise, we'd like the political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to entertain any comments that the public wishes to make. Is there anybody who wishes to make comments? It appears that there will be no comments at this time. I would now like to go to old business, which the first item would be to approve the minutes of the February 27th, 2025 meeting. As everybody had a chance to read the February 27th, 2025 minutes. At this time, I would like to ask if anybody has any comments that they wish to make. There being no comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2025, as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hey, there being none, I can do a roll call vote. Julie?
I'll abstain. I was on vacation at that meeting, but the minutes look good.
Okay, thank you. John?
Um, yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
I'm gonna say the same thing next.
Vote is three, zero, with one abstention. Thank you.
Right woman here.
Need to take that vest off today, I think.
Okay, the next set of minutes is the March 15th, 2025 minutes. This was a joint meeting between the Advisory Committee and the Select Board. Does anybody have any questions about this set of minutes?
Mr. Chair, all the documents are uploaded to the system, correct? Like the slideshow and all that stuff? It was put in the system?
As far as I know.
Okay.
These are included, yes. Minutes were uploaded.
I think they have to be approved first before they're uploaded, if I'm not mistaken.
All the other supporting documents from the meeting is my concern. I want to make sure they were all uploaded.
Only other supporting documents that weren't.
I did email the lists of the handouts from Candace and Steve Cass Investis.
Okay.
So those have been emailed, and then it says that the other documents are online. The budget book is online, and there's a website on it.
Excellent. Thank you.
So I imagine once these are signed off and approved, then it will all go online?
Sounds possible.
Excellent. Also, I'm gonna have documents at the end uploaded. Sounds good. Okay. Are there any questions about the March 15th, 2025 minutes? If there being none, I would entertain a motion to approve the March 15th, 2025 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Hey, I'll do a roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jacqueline?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Four, nothing vote to approve. Thank you. And the final set of minutes to approve. Again, this is a joint meeting with the Templeton Advisory Committee and the Templeton Select Board. A school budget, weeknight budget hearing held on March 19th. And are there any comments about this set of minutes? There would be none, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the March 19th, 2025 minutes.
Make a motion to approve the March 19th, 2025 minutes, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, I'll do a roll call vote for approval of these minutes. Julie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jacqueline? Yes.
And I also vote yes. I just wanted to make one very brief comment. I want to thank Jacqueline. She put many, many, many hours of work to do these minutes properly. I'm going to publish a review, and I really appreciate her efforts. She worked very closely with Kelsey. Put these minutes together, two of the meetings are joint, you know, meeting minutes, one of which, the March 15th minutes. Minutes were the result of an hours-long meeting with all the two boards and the department heads. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, that finishes the old business. The new business is the pre-town meeting. I would like to entertain a motion to open the pre-town meeting. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
They'll do a roll call vote. Julie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jacqueline?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So the pre-town meeting is now open. At this time, I'm going to start with Article Two. And the reason for that is I'm going to consider Article One at the same time as the article concerning the annual receipts. It's considered, and the further reason for this is I have an immediate family member who is a member of the fire department. And I will, I will be present in the room but not participating in the discussion or the vote. And Mr. Capitalist, for those two, those two warrant articles, would you be willing to share that portion of the meeting?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Jacqueline, would you like to read Article Two?
Sure. Article Two, Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget and Magnitudes. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum $185,618.11 for supplemental appropriations to the fiscal year 2025 operating budget as followed. The department accountant, $5,000, is the amount, and the reason is to backfill. The department is snow and ice. The amount is $1,000, $180,618.11. The reason is an FY25 deficit. And to meet said appropriation by transfer of said sum from certified free cash or take any other action related thereto submitted by the Select Board, a majority vote required.
Is there a, is a... Holly, would you like to speak or have a department head speak on behalf about this warrant article?
I'll do that. Did you have questions on both?
Well, I just, if you could summarize what the article is about, if you could, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, the accountant backfill is for the transition between the former accountant and the current accountant and covering vacations and additional monies needed in between when the other one left and then your one came. And the assistant town accountant filling in for that. So there was a little bit more needed than what they had budgeted for last year. That makes sense.
Yes.
Trip it with my words. The snow and ice is, that's the final FY25 deficit after our April storm. It's our final number. That's a typical article. We have one every year. We always seem to go over with snow and ice. It's kind of a gamble trying to estimate how much is going to be put in the budget every year. So that was the additional that we went over.
Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Is there any further discussion? No such thing.
Yes, thank you.
All right, then. We will now go to Article Three. Thank you, Holly. Yeah, I'll read this. Article Three, Fiscal Year 2025 Sewer Department Operating Budget Supplement. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000.01 to increase the FY2025 sewer department budget by said sum to total in the aggregate, the sum of $1,579,886.01 and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from certified retained earnings or take any other action related thereto submitted by the Select Board on behalf of the sewer commissioners, majority vote required. You wish to speak on this article?
I'm going to have Jeff Ulrich speak on this one.
Okay.
So, like last year, we had a bunch of unexpected breakdown repairs that weren't budgeted for. And then costs increased too, I guess, somewhat. So, it's basically to cover that. They did, at their rate healing, do a rate increase to compensate for this for this coming fiscal year. We didn't for this year because we were kind of hoping last year was like a fluke. You know, typical, but this year's turned out to be typical. So basically the rates are going up, so it shouldn't happen after this year.
So in what I understand, with $100,000, this is a part?
To supplement, yeah, the money we spent. Some of the things that broke last year carried into this year also. Hasn't doing repairs. I actually saw the one part coming for plant road that broke last year. So some costs came into this budget. Unexpected repairs.
And my only other question is, is $100,000 enough? Kind of a round figure.
I hope so. I had 150 originally, and I found out the other night it was 100, so I don't know where it dropped. I think it is. I had 150 to make sure it was. It can be 200,000 if something breaks that weekend, but it doesn't matter. So.
Are there any questions?
I would just... You requested 150, but they knocked it down in the budget proceedings at some point.
At some point, yeah. I don't know why.
I don't either.
That have been done at the time of the March 15th budget hearing when we...
I don't think, oh, this is...
Would that reflect in the minutes?
This, this is from their earnings. It's not in taxation dollars. It's their earnings.
Right.
Right.
From the revolving account.
I think it'll be enough. I mean, never really, since I saw that, basically tightened the belt right down to nothing. So. But, like, not gonna get up to you.
Any further questions? Jacqueline?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last vote. Can you read that?
I sure can. Article Four, Consent Agenda. To see if the town will vote to approve a consent agenda consisting of the following non-honorable actions or take any other action related thereto. Such items may be voted as a block or singly or any combination. But however voted, will be treated for accounting and legislative purposes as if each item were voted as a separate article. A, reports to the town offices. Accept the reports of town offices as printed in the 2024 Town Report. B, reports of town committees. Allow any town committee to present its report. C, set annual spending limits of revolving funds. Set the inner spending limits of the town revolving funds as follows. Burial Improvement Fund, $10,000. Recycling Fund, $10,000. Plumbing and Gas Inspector Fund, $20,000. Electrical Spectrum Fund, $25,000. Parks and Recreation Fund, $100,000. Salt Brine Production System Fund, $25,000. Except Transportation Network Community Fee Assessment. Appropriate such sum of money by received by the town from the Massachusetts Transportation Network Community Fee Assessment to an account entitled Dial-A-Ride or take any other action there to submit by the Select Board or a majority vote required.
Holly, do you or a department head wish to explain this article?
You want to explain the recycling, plumbing, and electrical? Is that just the standard that we put on there every year?
It is. If you want an overview, I can go real quick. So the recycling revolving account, we use to maintain down the landfill to do events like birthday cleanups. We, the plumbing and the electrical accounts are how our inspectors are actually paid. They get 80% of the fee, and 20% of the fee goes to the general fund. So they're not salaried.
The question I had was the the Salt Brine Production System Fund. I know that was set up just last year. And we had a pretty severe winter this year, and I'm wondering if $25,000, I know Bob is not here, but I'm wondering if the $25,000 was adequate? Or if that would need to be increased?
Yes, we're hoping it's adequate, just like we do every year. I'll have to double-check with him on that. I'll have that answer to you in the email.
Mr. Chair, I believe all but directorates had an opportunity to look at the warrant, correct? They all saw a copy of it. Okay. And so I'm sure if there was an issue, I would hope that they would come forward.
Yes.
You know. A good question. Let's know.
Yeah.
The Parks and Recreation Fund. Candace, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Parks and Recreation, the revolving account. We take all the fees in, and then we pay all the bills and shirts. Empire fees, referee fees, stipends, the equipment, everything. So, the last couple of years, we keep on increasing because of our programs. So we decided to go with $100,000 because last year we spent over $75,000. So, and we're right now breaking into $80,000 with our spending. Everything that comes in through fees, everything goes back out.
Yeah, I remember you requested the increase from $70,000.
So, I mean, like, our programs are very popular, so we spend a lot of, like, you can spend $8,000 just on shirts for one program. So, and then you have the referees at about eight, nine, $10,000 for that season. So you keep on adding up every season for every program that's, you know, you're taking in all the fees that backs all that money, the revolving account.
I guess the question to you was the same as $100,000.
Yeah, well, hopefully we did our math right to share, and if not, they know what to do. Everybody knows what to do. You write a letter, and you get a joint book. You can even ask again. But hopefully, we got it right this time. But yeah, so far, so, I mean, based on my numbers, I think they'll be fine for the end of the year. The only, the only high thing that they have unexpected, that's unusual, is they're using seeding money out of that revolving account for the soccer field. There's a long story behind it, but, so that's like $4,000. So that brings their money up that normally wouldn't be up in their account. So it's an unusual expense that they don't usually have an yearly basis. Had to be done.
Anybody have any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Article Five? Yes, then to Article Five.
Sure. Article Five, Amending the Bylaws, RE, Electoral Voting. To see if the town will vote to amend Section 22/10 of the general bylaws as follows. When a question is put, the sense of the meeting shall be determined by the voices of the voters, and the moderator shall declare the vote as it appears to him/her. If the moderator is unable to decide the vote by the sound of the voices, or if his/her decision is immediately questioned by seven or more voters rising in their places for that purpose, he/she shall determine the vote by ordering a show of hands, and he/she may appoint tellers to make and return the count. On matters requiring a two-thirds vote by a statute account need not be taken unless the vote is so declared as immediately questioned by the moderator or seven or more voters as provided in Mass. General Law, Section 3915. Notwithstanding the above or any provision of these bylaws to the contrary, subject to the availability of a system to enable electronic voting by town meeting using handheld devices, the moderator may count the vote or conduct a roll call vote on any matter before the town meeting by the use of such system submitted by the town clerk, majority vote required. Making life easier for you doing it this way.
Get doing fanciness.
We're getting a little fancy.
This is very fancy. I like it.
First off, I'd like to start off with that this was a joint effort with the moderator and myself. And basically, thought that voters might like this. It would alleviate the time of the hand counts or the screening of the votes. And people can actually vote privately with their own clicker.
Nice.
Nice.
Can I, can I add to this?
Sure.
I'm John Gray. I'm actually town moderator. This was something that Carol kind of brought to my attention a couple of years ago. I kind of dismissed it, like, eh, whatever. But then I've gotten people coming to me saying, you know, I've asked people, I asked people, I went, why don't you come to town meeting? Because you know, you're there. You don't see a lot of people. And they said, John, I don't feel comfortable voting. You know, I have, people watch you sometimes. So I said, well, I thought about that, so I went to Carol. I said, what about this electronic voting? Is it still good? And she said, yeah, John, we can do it. And I said, get it together. Do it. I think we should put it out there. I've had enough people ask me. Let's do it. And so she did. She did all the work. And I like it. If you look at the system, I did put the system out there on three different Facebook pages. It has its own radio frequency technology, so it works on its own system. So it's a pretty secure system. It, the clickers, Carol's talked to a few towns. This system, ecosystem is used in 76 towns in Massachusetts right now. So it's out there. It's been used, it's being used. She can, we can actually use their clickers until we can buy enough down the line. So there's plenty of clickers. Six to 700 clickers we can get for town meeting if we need it. So that's really cool, I think. You know, without us having to put that initial expense in. It's, it's, it's really, it gives anonymity to the voters, and that's what I've gotten from a lot of people. So, we can go to town meeting, we can click yes or no. You don't have to raise your hand. You don't have to worry about someone watching you. How'd you vote on that? You'll have that anonymity. It also has the capability of doing live amendments. So Noel wants to do an amendment, it's punched up there, and we can vote on it. We can vote on the amendment with your, with anonymous vote, yes or no.
That's good to see.
So can I play the percentage if it needs to be a two-thirds vote? It'll show?
Yeah, it's really cool. It'll be on the screen, so it'll show you. If there was 100 people there, it'll show you what 50 people said for yes, and 50 people said no.
Okay.
And so if it's, like Carol said, it's a two-thirds vote, it'll be up there. So it's not instant, but it's pretty quick. So it'll be right there on the screen. It'll be no more. You won't have to worry about hand counts anymore because it'll be, in essence, this would be a hand count. You would be taking a hand count every vote. And so they, to me, it's a no-brainer. It's a, it's really, it's a secure system, and it's gonna, it's gonna bring more people, if you go on their website, or if you looked at any of the stuff that I put out there, they have gotten a lot more people to come to town meeting because they know that they can just vote yes or no without having to stand up and saying it, or even shouting it out. The other thing that's really good about it, if you look at some of the videos back during COVID, Sterling did a town meeting at an airstrip where everyone was in their car. They voted from their cars at town meeting because of COVID. This is something that we could, I think, down the line, you have people that, you know, they just can't be in a room with people because they can get sick from stuff. We might be able to somehow find a way to have them in a separate area and still vote at town meeting. So it's more inclusive, I believe. I think the system's really cool. It's actually used by the House of Representatives. And I mean, it has tremendous possibility, but it's something that, like I say, I had people come to me and ask me. And as town moderator, that's, I try to listen to what people want. And I try to, I try to make town meeting better, and I think this will help town meeting better. I think it will make more people come. I think it will make people feel more comfortable voting. And like I say, I really pushed this, and pass or fail, I won't ask you to do it again. I can tell you that way. I'm not like that. It's, if you want it, come to town meeting and vote. If you don't, you know, don't like it, vote, vote no at town meeting. I mean, that's, that's how town meeting works. You vote yes or no.
Yep.
And that's, I think that's, yeah. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Your time.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator.
Is any advisory members would like to comment?
I think it sounds great.
I would like to comment briefly. One of my best friends is a town moderator. He's been a town moderator for over 30 years. And for the first 25 years or so, did it the old-fashioned way. And one of the problems was with hand counts on very close votes. He's found that over the years to be a problematic area. And he, several years ago, his town adopted this very method, and he's very enthusiastic about it. And it has eliminated the problem of close hand counts. And it's also eliminated the problem of close two-thirds majority votes as well. So I think it's a great idea. I'm very glad that you spent the time to work on this. Any other discussion?
Yep.
All right, then we will move on to Article Six. Jacqueline?
Article Six, Amending the Town Bylaws, Section 71.2 Financial Reports and 71.3 Annual Report. To see if the town will amend the bylaws, Chapter 71, Section 2 Financial Reports and Section 3 in a report as followed, or take any other action thereto. Deletions are in strike-through and additions are in bold. Section 71/2 Financial Reports. All officers, boards, standing committees, and special committees of the town having charge of the expenditure of the town money shall, on a fiscal year basis, report thereon in writing in such manner as to give the citizens a fair and full understanding of the objects and methods of such expenditures, referring, however, to the report of the town accountant for statements in detail of receipts and payments, and may make therein such accommodations as they deem proper. Such reports shall be submitted to the Select Board for inclusion in the annual town report on or before the last Thursday of October following the end of the fiscal year. Section 71-3 Annual Report. A publication, it shall be the duty of the board to publish the annual Public a publication, it shall be the duty of the board to publish the annual report to be made available to the residents. Electronically on the official town website. On the last Thursday of April each year and physical copies to be made available for distribution at town hall. In the select board's office on the same day, and thereafter, the board will make copies available for distribution at the annual town meeting. Submitted by the select board, majority vote required.
Now, Holly, you wish to uh discuss this article?
Yeah.
This was um spearheaded by former select board member Matt Reverb. And he had done a lot of work in. Putting the amendment together. He sent it out for comment to department heads and select board and I believe some other. Members of the community. Um he worked with me closely on it because he knows I have worked on it for years and that it needs to be printed and and all the ins and outs of it. The idea was to. Change the date when. Reports are due to our office. Through October to give us more time to get it ready. We were getting them, you know, the end of January, and it was kind of a tight period to get everything done. Make sure that you got those in and then get it printed. Um I think the initial idea was to make sure we have the annual report. And plenty of time for people to review it for town meeting because they have to accept the reports. Um for example, this year. Our audit is, our our audit is done, it has been done for months. However, we have to include by statute. The water audit. And they are on a calendar year for light. Now, fiscal year for water, I believe I have that correctly, so they have to wait to a certain point to get it, so it's just. Really difficult to get the results from their audit to our auditor to get everything complete, to get it in the annual report. So that was kind of the idea. The way it's worded now, it's probably the best we can do it. We still might not be able to get the audit into the annual report, but it won't be required by by law to do that. And if we don't get it in time, we'll have to do a separate printing for that. So it might cost us a little bit more for printing that second report with just the audit. But I think it's gonna. Get it into the hands of the voters earlier. Um give us more time to get it done. And and be better overall.
Any uh member of advisory wish to comment or question?
No.
I think Matt did a great job.
Good too. Thank you, Holly. Sure. The article seven, uh surplus sewer easement. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to measure. Potential of a twenty-foot wide easement for the purpose of assessing value and potential use of the property known. At three eighty-one Baldwinville Road owned by the town of Templeton. Or take any other action related thereto, submitted by the select board, uh majority vote required.
John Graves, can I approach?
Yes.
Um so this easement originally had all kinds of numbers in. On the draft board, it showed where it was gonna go, it showed the footage and and such. And it goes near a Butters property, it actually goes to wetland. Uh I'm very uncomfortable with the way this is written because it doesn't tell people that it's going to wetland. Um it's blank easement, you're giving an easement to who? Who's who needs it? Does anyone need it? I don't need it. So it's blank, it's out there. So if this passes at town meeting, you're giving an easement to town property onto wetland. With no one actually taking on the responsibility of it. And it's a sewer line, so you're gonna put a sewer line through wetlands. So my question is, who's gonna pay for this when something happens ten, fifteen years down the line? But it it it's gonna be the town of Templeton, it's not gonna be whoever gets the easement. I I'm I'm just, I'm concerned with the way it's worded. I'm concerned with just everything about it. Um and I just, I hope people really look into this easement. And understand what it's really, it's it's, I think it's bad, but that's my opinion, and uh you can do what you want with it. Thank you.
I can now answer that sort of explain. So originally, the article was written to give the select board authority to. Surplus the twenty-foot wide easement and authorization to. Sell it in assets. Um the select board has recently, I might came up with the language at the meeting. To change the scope to. Authorize the select board to measure and have. Assess. The value of the easement. And then. Decide what they wanna do with the property, if anything. So this isn't granting an easement or the authority to grant the easement. The purpose has changed to measure the potential, have it appraised. Not at town expense. And then the select board would have the value of that easement and be able to decide if they wanna do anything with it. It does go through conservation land behind the DPW. And there was, has been a lot of discussion about it, but this will not authorize them to sell the easement.
But would that have to be done at a future town meeting?
Yes.
So what you're saying is the private parties have to pay for the the studies and the. To determine the scope of the work, the value of the land. All the legwork.
Payment hasn't been discussed. But that's my plan to bring to the select board. If the private party that wishes to look into this. Wants to pay for that appraisal, then the select board would have the authority to authorize me to. Look into getting the appraisal, and I would get the money from them first before we did that.
And I think I I think the main concern of Mr. Graves appeared to be that uh this article is not specific enough. I I realize that it lists a. Property, location, three eighty-one Baldwinville Road, um. And I think that's a legitimate concern is uh, you know, how specific.
Right. We did have the language in there, and after talking to town council and explaining them the change to the language. They suggested we take out because it's just not necessary. We're not selling the property, we're not granting an easement, we're just. Getting authority to find out what the value is and then. Let the board discuss what they might wanna do with the property if they do anything at all.
Right, so all the town property is presently town property by the DPW. Mr. Graves, you have any additional questions or concerns?
I would say, I mean. So it it's going, it it was originally put out as a as a sewer line. Um then it then spoke at several meetings, select board meetings, about a sewer line going through there. So it's not, let's not kid ourselves, this isn't just a, this isn't just an investigation into whether someone wants to do it or not. It's gonna happen if it passes, in my opinion. Um you're you're looking at. Town property that we're gonna give up, that how, we don't know by the, this town is expanding at at an incredible rate. This is gonna add more houses, it was talked about twenty houses being attached to this. That's, it was said that at a meeting, twenty houses, the reason why they wanna run that through is because. It's gonna be raised septic systems if they don't. Which are more expensive because you have to have two tanks and you have to pump it, et cetera. They can run it down Brooks Road if they want to, but they don't wanna do it because. If you're a developer, what do you wanna do? You wanna build a house as cheap as you can and make as much money as you can, right? That's the way I look at it. We don't need more houses in this town. The superintendent at the budget hearing, if you watched it, talked about how. They phased out school choice because. We don't have enough room for our own kids in this own town. We're running out of space in our schools. For our own students, our own kids that live in this town. They're down to nothing for for school choice because they don't have the room anymore, they had to get rid of it. You know, it used to be a great thing to to have school choice to get kids from all this house to commit, but we don't have the space for them anymore. And so this is something that, you know, this is a, not even this article, but down the line, people gotta think about. Doing something about how many houses are we gonna build, continue to build in this town, where where we we we're outpacing ourselves, we can't. We can't keep up with it. Then it's, why are we having budget problems?
Does any member wish to comment?
Well, that's one of the biggest reasons, that's one of the biggest things we have in our revenue in this town. Unfortunately, I mean. Where's our revenue coming from? Some of it's coming from these new homes and taxpayers. Quite a bit of it is, actually, when you look at the budget. I mean, I agree, I grew up here, it has grown pretty quickly, but you're also, that's a big piece of your revenue. For the town right now, because they don't want, the people have always voted down big business. Small business, medium business. That's the vote of the people, they don't want that, but that would bring in revenue. So the only other revenue, the biggest revenue we have right now, I think, is real estate. Unfortunate, but it's the facts. That's where our money's coming in. You can correct me if.
It's ninety-two percent.
It's, it's pretty high up there.
Ninety-two percent. It's ninety-two percent.
So that's the frustrating part.
It's not gonna change anytime soon either.
But.
Yeah.
You can bring in all kinds of money, but if you're putting it back into the school because of all the kids that are going there. Uh where are you? You know, and you're not breaking even, and I agree, we don't have business, but at some point, it's.
Well, we do, we have eight percent.
But but we're, we're not gaining.
But don't laugh because God only has twelve percent. So, yes, correct. So when you look at how big God is versus Templeton, you have to be having only eight percent business versus God having twelve percent, thirteen percent, so along those lines, but. Um but I mean, that, if there was a. Tax rate change between business and residential and commercial, you're looking at about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase. Just on that eight percent. So I'm not saying to do that, I'm just saying.
Also, if I may add, uh you know, Mr. Capitalist recently did a comparison town of, you know, the ten, eleven towns of the closest in size and. And demographics of Temple- Templeton, and what I found very interesting in looking at it, that all the towns have lost industry over the years. And all the towns had roughly the same percentage of industry that Templeton does, you know, around eight, nine, ten percent. Uh so we're not an outlier in that respect. Um you know, we're pretty, we're pretty typical for uh. The comparable towns, and these comparable towns are from wide areas of the state. I found that very interesting.
No, I think if you look around us, honestly, as bad as some people think this town's doing, we're. I think we're doing better than.
Oh, yes.
A lot around us, no doubt. I'm just, I'm looking at what uh and thinking back to the budget hearing. And what the superintendent said about how we're getting maxed at our school, so. You know, uh what's that gonna mean, another school down the road shortly, uh that that's, that's just the point I'm making. I understand that's how we make a lot of our money, but. You build a house and they have two kids. Is it, is it a plus for us in the end, or is it?
It's negative revenue, that that's your point, it's negative revenue.
You're not, you're not really gaining, building houses, I don't think. Unless it's gonna be just single people come in. That's my point, I it's, I understand Julie's point about the money, but in the end. Where does it really fall? As a talent for us, and I don't think it really ends up helping us really in the end. That's.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Holly, correct me if I'm wrong, Holly, if uh based on the. The status of the select board. The select board have the authority to do this on their own.
I thought we.
So why would they need a the people's vote? Because they would have, they have the select board as the the authority to to do this.
Right, to appraise and leave them?
Sure. That they on a on a board, on a select board vote, yeah, if they have a full, if they have a full board, yes. They would have the the approval and authority to do so. It's like.
Sure. Check with town council, but they they reviewed the article, they. Didn't say that that could happen. I mean, they have authority over town property, but not authority to. Appraise it?
To get it appraised?
That doesn't make any.
We're not, we're not doing, we're getting it, and and again, they're approving it to be appraised and paid for by somebody else. It's not using taxation dollars, somebody else is gonna be, so they're just. Taking money from somebody else to get the property appraised and see what it's worth. To make a final conclusion or decision based on what the future's gonna hold for that piece of real estate. Um you know, I can, you know, if you wanna talk about stuff like in the in the historical district, I got it, there's a lot of rules and guidelines. Uh that concern with with uh with those districts. Um same with like, uh like East Templeton, Sun, East Templeton Village or Baldwinville Village, I mean, I know there's like a lot of restrictions. But to get an authorization for to measure the twenty-foot wide easement uh for assess and 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 purpose for use. I mean, I think the select would have full authority to do that, I believe. I mean, you check with county council, I just don't want.
I will check, but I think it's also that. The board would like the town meeting to vote on whether they're in favor of this even being appraised.
It's a matter of transparency.
No, I got it, I got it. I mean, because obviously that would, okay, I got it.
Yeah, I think the balance is between the need for transparency and the authority of the board, and the board's trying to be transparent.
Understood, makes sense.
Mr. Chair, yes, that's exactly why I rewrote it. I I I like, I agree with John, it's gotta have it stay in court, you've gotta be able to talk through it. I think the 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 labeling of the article is appropriate. Um but the the language, it gives enough. It gives the board enough um transparency and flexibility to be able to say, what is the next pro- step in the process? If this person that came to the town in full faith to say, I'm interested in doing this with my property. That that I would like to understand how I can go uh across an an easement and whether it's worth it. And so this was really a compromise to get it to town meeting to say, let's let's discuss it as a town meeting.
Because if there's other things involved, such as wetlands and.
Absolutely.
Other uh.
DEP has already, right, has already granted um an an approval, I forget what the the language is, like a non um non-conforming use. Or otherwise.
Okay.
So that's all information that should come out at town meeting, but I, again, we all believe that it should be a town discussion, not just a board. Let's go do this.
I got you.
I think there would have been more anger if the board went went ahead and did it on its own. And said, you need, you need to let the people decide this.
Understood.
And have the conversation, I agree with John.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Short article, a long discussion.
It's good times.
Care to read article?
Do I have? Okay, article eight, funding of community preservation accounts to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars and no sense. To the several accounts of the community preservation committee as recommended by the community preservation committee as follows. Administrative account, twenty thousand, five percent. Historical uh resources reserve, forty thousand, ten percent, community housing reserve, forty thousand, ten percent. Open space and recreation reserve, forty thousand, ten percent, general reserve, two hundred sixty thousand, sixty-five percent, total of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh and to meet any appropriation by transfer from community preservation annual revenues, which include the amount of collection as surcharge on real property. In the November twenty twenty-five state match for CPA permissible expenses. Or take any other action thereto, submitted by the select board on behalf of the community preservation.
Is there anyone from the community preservation?
It's just a standard thing that we do every year, it's the buckets, they all go in and detect the money that goes in. Uh it's a little bit lower, um uh the money that's given last few years, we knew. A higher level, but um we're seeing decreases. And so we were, but was mo- um moderate the share. Based on what we were told, um. You know, past we got five, six, but now we're down to four, so.
Alright, thank you. Uh any member comments or questions?
No, thank you.
CPA closure of the Stonebridge project accounts. To see if the town will vote to close the sum of eighty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. For the below-mentioned projects and for the monies to revert back to their source funds. S T M eleven, two thousand nineteen, Stonebridge, thirty-four thousand, open space. S T M ten, twenty twenty, Stonebridge, forty-nine thousand, three thirty-seven, twenty-one, undesignated. Or take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the select board on behalf of the community preservation committee, majority vote required.
Candace, you wish to comment?
Well, this is the Stonebridge that everybody has made it clear in town meetings, they would like it to be a road again, um, they're not interested in a walking path. So, the CPC has decided, because it's been many, many years, this, this money has been sitting in these accounts waiting for these projects. So, they're asking to put the money back into, uh, the, those buckets, so that they can use the funds for other projects in the town. Um, instead of the funds being tied up or a walking, um, path, but it's clearly not what the town wants, based on. The votes that we've just had in the past. They wanna have the road again.
Now, any members wish to question?
Who, uh, who wrote the article? Was it the select board that wrote the article? Or was it CPC?
The article, it's our vote to put our, to put the money back into the bucket.
Yeah, it, the undesigned bucket is, no, there's no such thing, is there?
Yes, there is.
There's an undesigned?
It's a general, it's the general one.
That's what I thought.
It's, yeah, so, yeah, it's supposed to be general revenue, it's the general one.
That, that's where I was, that's where I was saying.
Yes, I, I, I know.
You should, you bring this to the people and says undesigned, they're like, what the, what does that mean?
If, 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 so it basically means that it doesn't, it's not open space and it's not this. That's, they use that word all the time, but it is the general one, you can use it for any historical, you can use it open, yeah.
It, it goes back into your general fund.
General fund, yeah, basically. Undesigned, it is, it is considered in the votes, they do say undesigned on many times.
Yeah, because it's not attached to anything else.
Attached to any of the other, um, stipulations.
Or projects.
Yeah, projects, yes.
I got you.
Yeah.
I just want the people to see that.
Yeah, so sometimes you'll see where you'll see historical for like the church, and it might, some of the money came out of that bucket, and some of it came on that undesigned general bucket.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted like, for the people, and I'm sure they're looking at home.
And they do say bucket all the time.
Yep.
And, and any further questions or comments?
Nope.
You all set, Candace?
Yep, that, that's pretty much the hell that one works.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Hey, uh, moving on to Article ten.
Sure. Article ten, CPA funding for Gilman Wade softball fields. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars and no sense. For the below-mentioned project as follows. Item agent to expend Templeton Parks and Recreation, the amount is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the purpose is for Gilman Wade. And the CPA fund slash source, fifty thousand dollars, open space slash recreation. Um, Templeton Department Public Works, the purpose is Gilman, is softball field, and it's seventy thousand dollars, undesigned. The number one, which is attached to the softball field's purpose, is to provide funding to replace the fencing and the dugouts and to improve the ball. To improve the field surfaces at the Gilman Wade softball field, at Gilman Wade Park in Baldwinville. Public benefit includes safer fields and protection from the weather for participants, or to take any. Other action related thereto submitted by the select board on behalf of the community preservation committee, majority vote required.
Uh, Candace, you wish to comment on this article?
This is well-needed, um, replacement fencing, um, those particular fields that don't have dugouts. Is, uh, been needed for many, many years, especially the fencing, the fencing, um, when we went back to try to get, um. Uh, quotes and stuff, they didn't even wanna talk to us, because they said for the last fifteen, twenty years, they've been, different businesses have been giving us quotes. And we haven't done the project, so, um, this is, and, and the fencing is bold, it's falling out, um, kids climb on it. It's unsafe for the town, it's a liability, and, um, we hope that people will, um, wanna do it, uh. But the dugouts are also a needed factor. You know, it's just, I mean, especially the rain the other day, I mean. Everybody says, I wish we had it in Field Three, because Field Three is the one that has the less drainage issues, so we had moved to that one, but there's no dugouts. So. But, uh, yeah, everybody's excited, they hope it passes. And the CPC, uh, board was, uh. They were behind it and voted for it. Now I'm gonna ask the folks.
Thank you, do, uh, any members have questions?
No.
Good, thank you. Yeah, moving on to Article eleven. Article eleven, CPA funding for Houghton Park Ball Field Project. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and no sense for the below-mentioned project as follows. Uh, the item Templeton Parks and Recreation, the amount, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the rehab Houghton Park Ball Field. CPA Fund Source, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, undesigned. Uh, and also the Templeton Department of Public Works is a. Item agent to expand, and footnote one concerning the ball field rehabilitating. Of the Houghton Park Ball Field as described in the grant application by the Town of Templeton to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities. P A R C Grant Program, uh. Uh, described in three oh one, uh, dot C M R, five, approval of CPA funds for this project. Is contingent upon the town receiving the park grant and its associated reimbursement return. To the CPA Undesignated Reserve Fund, or take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the select board on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, majority vote required.
This one is the, uh, next phase in Houghton Park, uh, we're about to do the, um, swing set. Um, uh, and we did the parking lot, so this is the back ball field, um, it's. That's like decades, that's needs to be replaced and fixed. Um, this particular one has a master plan that we had, um, the town voted to let us have it drawn up. Um, and with this one, it's a relocation, it's not just. The, it's, the ball field is gonna be flipped to the other side because of, of the way the sun comes in, it was never designed in the right manner. So this is a whole put-in new ball field with dugouts and fencing and a whole nine yards. Uh, for this project, and this, and this will be when we can, um, go for the, uh, next parkland grant, um. And so we wanna be ready for it, because having the, um, funding cert, you know, approved. Will come a long way going for the, the, uh, the grant. For the town, and like, we already had the first grant, and we're finishing that up, so we want the ability to go for the next one.
Does any member have questions or comments? I just wanna ask, uh, Grayson, were you part of this?
We haven't really discussed it a whole lot at this point, I'm currently closing out our current park grant for the Houghton Park project. The closing this current grant out and applying for the next one are overlapping right on top of each other, um, so.
But, yeah, but in order to, 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 to do the next one, you have to have the funding to go for it, they told us, we were very lucky to get the first one. We thought, we did it kind of backwards, um, so we're lucky and we fulfilled that, so. This, um, this vote is needed in order for us to move forward, and the process of when we move forward, it will give us, if it's. Twenty twenty-five, application in twenty twenty-six, we still need to have the approval of the town to use the funds. Um, to do this. It's just a matter of them letting us do the application now or later, but, um, they have, the, um. That group has encouraged us to go for the next one. Um, I was there when they came through the walkthrough and stuff, and they looked at the back and they said, are you gonna do something with this? This is, and we said, yeah, and they said, well, you should, you know, make sure you get, you know, they told us, now that you know the steps. Go the right way. So this is what this is about, you know, securing funding, so that when we go for the application, it'll help better our chances of getting it.
Are you working in conjunction with the veterans agent or the, or the?
Uh, yeah, well, we have Mr. Brio in the Parks and Rec Commission. And, uh, he's starting, it's first, you know, it's different, because you have so many monuments, so different groups will have to be. Consulted with it, but, um, they're already starting to, they're excited, they're already fundraising, they're already measuring for the. Thing, and hopefully there'll be another possibility of some kind of grants or fundraising.
Okay.
Also, um, McGovern has got some letters and some stuff on that project to see if they could find anything for us to.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further comments, questions? And, um, at this time, I would like to move on to Article twelve.
Is that me?
Yes.
Article twelve, state audit, to see if the town will vote to approve the expenditure from free cash in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars and no sense. To commission the state auditor to conduct a forensic audit of the town's finances over the past five years. With all unexpected funds allocated for this purpose deposited back into the general fund, submitted by the select board, majority vote required.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Holly, would you like to comment on this?
Sure, give you an overview of it, um, select board chair, Tim Toth had. Discussed with the board that he wanted to look into this, uh, just to get a. Clear picture of the finances of the last five years and kinda do a, a double check. Mike, do you have anything further to add to that?
No, I think that was, that was perfect. Redundancy, I think.
Another set of eyes. Uh, any of the members have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Uh, Article thirteen.
Sure.
Thank you.
F Y twenty twenty-six Sewer Department Op- Operating Budget. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and no sense. To operate the sewer department for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And the balance from the receipts and revenues to be collected on behalf of the sewer department for said fiscal year. Or to take any other action related thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Select Board on behalf of the Sewer Commission, majority vote required.
Thank you. Uh, Holly, do you wish to comment on this?
This is yearly. Yeah, it's, it's just their standard. Yearly. Operating budget that they do every year.
Any members have any questions or comments?
No, thank you. Sure. Article fourteen, F Y twenty-six Cable Department Operating Budget. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and no sense. To operate the cable department for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. And to meet said appropriation by a transfer of three hundred, of three thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and no sense. From the certified retained earnings of the cable fund. A transfer of fifty thousand dollars and no sense from certified free cash and the balance. From the receipts and revenues to be collected on behalf of the cable department for said fiscal year, or take any. Action related thereto submitted by the select board, majority vote required.
Holly, do you wish to, uh, comment on this?
Yeah, s- same thing as, as sewer, really, this is their departmental budget that they, they're gonna use for the year to. Do everything that they do. And they had asked for that additional fifty thousand free cash, so they can get by for the year.
This, this is because of the decrease in cable subscriptions.
Yes.
They're talking about the castle, about that issue. There was concerns that I, I have, is I, I believe advisory in the select board have written to, uh. The state, uh, our state representatives in the state legislature about, uh. Uh, the legislature passing fees, uh. To be assessed on Netflix or Disney or. You know, some of these other multi YouTube, some of these multi-billion dollar companies, uh, you know, we're really not paying anything, uh. And, um, and yet cable subscriptions continually go down, so. Any questions, comments? Either being none. Go on to Article. Article fifteen, I'll read this, Article fifteen, set the salaries of elected town officials. To see if the town will vote in accord with National Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight. To fix or maintain the salaries of certain elected officials for fiscal year twenty twenty-six as follows. The town clerk, seventy-seven, five one five yearly, the select board, each member, two thousand five fifty yearly. The water commissioner, each, two thousand five fifty yearly, the sewer commissioner, each, three thousand dollars yearly. The light commissioner, each, two thousand five fifty yearly. Um, footnote number one, uh, for the water and sewer commissioner, uh, that is paid for by an enterprise fund. Footnote number two, uh, concerning the light commissioner that is paid for by the light department. Or take any other action related thereto submitted by the select board, majority vote required. You wish to comment, Holly?
Sure. Well, I, I think you already explained the water, sewer, and light, that those are paid for by, not by the town's general fund. Um, the town clerk, that's her annual salary, and the select board stipend. Is at twenty-five fifty, which is actually lower than it has been, than it was voted at town meeting to begin with. There is just not enough room in the budget to include those. Three thousand seven hundred fifty stipends, so we had to reduce those to two thousand five fifty.
Do, uh, the members have any questions or comments?
I, I would only say I have one comment in regard to the select board, it was brought to a town meeting by a resident, um, it was voted on. And I, I feel. That the number should stay where it is until the town's people vote it down to a lower number. If that should be the case, but that's just my opinion. I'm not speaking as.
What was the original, about three thousand seven?
Three thousand seven fifty. Was what the people passed. And for many, many years prior to that, there was nothing.
Oh, I know.
And being a former member, it is a lot of work. And I, and members can do or say what they want with that funding. But I feel that if the people thought that they were worth. Three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, then that should remain the number. Until the townspeople say they're not worth that anymore. Cause in my opinion, they're worth every penny. Again, just my opinion.
I think this leads the question in my mind is, is the, uh.
Cut in here to give to somewhere, I, I just disagree.
But, my, my question is, is the authority there, I mean, it is an annual town.
I don't believe so, but.
It's an annual appropriation. You know, it, it was, it was voted from the floor, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Four ninety-one, uh, Auburnston Road, it was a floor vote that brought it up, um, in terms of the, the. You know, it's, it legal or otherwise, it's, it's an annual appropriation, and so that's what the budget is being put forward for. I, I agree with Julie, but at the same time, I mean, you saw the, the, I, it, if you hadn't seen it, the last select board meeting, we were still trading horses. So. We were still trying to make budget things work.
I was here.
Carrying the six.
I understand how difficult the budget is.
Move the decimal point, I got it, yeah.
Unfortunately.
The right way, the right way.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
I agree. I do agree with Holly and, um, Julie, that it is a lot of work.
But, at this time, uh, as I stated earlier, uh, because I have an immediate member of my family, uh, who's a member of the fire department. And Article one, and Article sixteen, uh, quickly discusses the fire department. I will neither, uh, be present for the discussion, uh, or vote. And at this time, I would, uh, in the meeting over with the capitalist, who has graciously agreed to, uh, handle these two articles.
Sure.
Thank you.
Article, uh, I'll wait till you leave the room. I figured, okay, Article one, uh, late bill. To see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of a late bill from the prior fiscal year from the twenty twenty-five budget of the following department. In the following amount, fire department, three thousand. Fire Department, three thousand five hundred dollars late bill, or take any other action there too. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, nine tenths vote required. Any questions with that? Comments?
Why are we not paying our bills on time?
I mean, that's very cheap.
That would be the only question I have.
So this bill comes from hiring an excavator at a major fire we had in May from last year. And this bill typically would go to the insurance company of the property, which they did not have insurance. I did not get or know I was even getting a bill until after the fiscal year was over. The company first sent the bill to the police department because that's where they got their phone call from.
Right.
Again, I did not even see how I had here nor or know I was getting a bill until September. When it finally made its way, they finally figured out it needed to come to me. Um, I talked with the contractor at that time, it would be days before I went out with my next surgery. I told him I could not do anything before that, which made us late where I couldn't get it into the fall town meeting. I've been working with him patiently. Telling him the whole law to absolutely a a meeting because it's a late bill. I have scrimped and saved this year in my budget to be able to pay that with this year's money and to not have to come out of free cash. Um, and.
Excellent. That was going to be my next question.
Yeah.
So you have the funds available, so as you say, excellent. Any other questions, Austin?
Thank you.
See none. Okay, let's move on to Article sixteen. You would.
Sure.
Funding for ambulance department operations. To see if the town will vote to transfer five hundred twelve thousand nine hundred thirty nine dollars and no cents from the fire department ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to be spent by the fire chief to pay for the operation of the ambulance service within the fire department during FY twenty twenty six with any with any unexpended monies in the ambulance budget being returned to the receipts reserved for appropriation account and with any unexpended balances in the receipts reserved for appropriation account being carried forward to the subsequent fiscal year or to take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the Select Board, majority vote required.
Anything else, Chief?
It's our annual budget. We are bringing in more than that every year, so we will hopefully be able to stand taking that from your account.
Excellent. Any questions from the members?
It's time.
Excellent, Julie? Nope. Excellent. No, you're all set. Article seventeen, are you very well?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, thanks.
Seventeen, you ready?
Yep. Whenever you are. Thank you.
Article seventeen, FY twenty six general fund operating OpEx budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten million six hundred and thirty three thousand seventy four dollars and no cents for the operations of the general government for fiscal year two thousand twenty six or take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the Select Board, majority vote required.
You wish to comment, Holly?
Sure. This is for all of the departments in the general fund, our overall budget. And in the voters guide, I'll have the chart with all of the departments and what each is spending.
Any members wish to comment or question? Also, you.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, just Mike Curry, four ninety one Hubbardston Road, just wanted to make a comment that again, as the last couple of years, we've all got together and had lots of discussions. I want to thank Adam for carrying it forward through the process. He basically left right as he was giving us the budget. And then Holly picked it up and still had some work to do, but I I just want to thank everybody, everyone that came to the budget meeting. Those are long meetings. There's a lot of good discussion. There's a lot of work left to do. Um, we got we got by this year. But if you listen to the department heads, it's tough right now, especially in in public services, emergency services. So I I just, you know, I'm 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 on my way out the door. I would just say it has been excellent trying to balance a budget and we've done that. Mr. Graves said it here earlier. It feels like things are good. Um, and a lot of you contributed to that. I just wanted to add that.
I would like to say the March fifteenth joint meeting. I think that was one of the most constructive meetings that I've ever been to. I I just wish we didn't have the constraints that we have. You know, which are really very difficult constraints.
It it's it's a greater conversation than the people that show up to that meeting. I I think everybody can agree that we've got a bigger conversation that needs to happen and we need mass awareness. We we don't we don't need fifty people who know what's going on in town and show up to town meeting. We need more. There's sixty five hundred voters in town and they really got to understand where we're at. And that we're limping by and and if it if it's because of our professionals that we have on staff right now that are helping us do this, but they can't, they they can't they can't squeeze blood from the stone. We've got to be able to come together as a community to understand our school is going to get bigger. You can't put up a note, Templeton's closed for business, you know, proceed to the next exit on Route two, can't do that. You know, Templeton's a really good community. We have really good programs. Candace knocks it out of the park, literally knocks it out of the park with her programs, and we've got to be able to capitalize on that momentum. And and we're not like some of the the, we don't have some of the constraints that some of the communities around us have right now where they're looking at closing major services. We're able to carry on with these major services. But we're doing so. We're we're eating ourselves rather with from within and we're using every available dollar. And there's a lot of discussion on what dollars we should use it, but we've got them, we've got the buffer to be able to do it. But we've got to have a greater conversation than the fifty people that show up to be able to understand what's going on. So this is a great OpEx budget. I highly, you know, I'm I'm super proud of the team that put it together. But it's not enough. It's it's lower than it was. We contracted. Our economy has retracted. The number is lower than it was last year. That's not good for our departments.
Not two hundred thirty eight thousand dollars less.
We should grow. We shouldn't shrink.
That, yeah, it's business. You shouldn't. I said that to my son. He said, you know, you run a business, you make you know, six, seven, eight hundred thousands of dollars a year, Metro Boston landscaping. I said, that's which is a great business. I mean, can you imagine losing two hundred thousand dollars? I mean, how would that affect your business? He's like, it would drastically affect their business. So I mean, but you're right. And I'm trying to find you know, where that difference is. I mean, I still can't figure it out between, you know, last year and this year's budget book. Um, because that's a, that's a huge difference.
Again, it's falling, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. It's it's falling on the professionals that we have. Again, the same people that are, again, rather than bringing in any new revenue or having a serious conversation about where we are from a tax base, which we do, we need to have a better conversation about that. It's not about just saying no to taxes. It's understanding. Then you don't get what you pay for. You get what you pay for, and if you don't pay for it, you don't get it. And our department heads are are saying that right now. They're saying, I don't have enough to do the things that you want me to do.
Right.
I think I think Chief Bennett has been the been the most eloquent about that. When he comes in and he sits at the the hot seat and he says, I can't do this. We just had to roll back our our, you know, not necessarily a bad thing, but we had to roll back the liquor license because he said, I cannot have coverage without having more officers on the street. The recommended amount. I mean, he reminds us of that all the time. We're we're many officers short. In ARPA only a lot. Again, this is through the ingenuity of what we've had, the resources that we've had available without going to the taxpayers to say, I need more taxation. We've gone to ARPA. We've gone to grants and we just, we need, we need to have a greater conversation.
I have to agree with that a hundred percent, and and it's unfortunate because I think our residents don't, a lot of our residents do not realize the impact it is. They are making our town unsafe by not choosing to make other decisions in regards to some of these departments. We went from bare bones in three safety departments in two thousand fifteen to building them up. And now I agree with you, everything's cutting back again. You know, and you got to be really careful with that. You got to look at it and and the voters need to understand that if they want more officers on the street, then they can't increase other things. They should prioritize the safety of the town. I've always said that. I continue to say that today.
Growth and innovation. I walked in the door. Sorry for being late, but you know, John Graves was talking about the new voting system or otherwise. I love that. We've got to talk about growth and we have to have innovation.
Agreed.
Excellent. Any any further comments on Article seventeen? Thank you all. Okay, going on to Article eighteen. I'll I'll read it. Article eighteen, the tanker lease. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety seven thousand thirty four dollars and no cents for the second year of the tanker lease and to meet said appropriation by transfer of ninety seven thousand thirty four dollars and no cents from certified free cash or take any other action related thereto submitted by the Select Board, majority vote required. Holly, do you wish to comment on this?
I'm going to ask Chief Dickie to comment on this.
Um, this would build into my budget for this next coming year and Adam building up the budget made the decision to take it out of my budget and move it over to free cash.
Did you have the money in your budget?
To cover the tank release. Know what I what I requested, because that's if, you know, the first year you purchase something, you it go, when it goes out for the town meeting or whatnot, it's decided where it's that first year it's done. And then following years, you build it into your budget, and that's what I did last, this fiscal year we're doing now. We paid for it out of my budget, but next year Adam made the decision that he didn't have the money in the budget to give it to me that way. He took it out and put it into free cash. But it's already a lease that's in process. It's a second year payment. Then we need to pay it.
My status of this.
Thank you, should be here in July.
It's really a lease to own. This is really for the benefit of the taxpayers. This is leased to own. All the monies paid go towards ownership of the vehicle. It doesn't just disappear.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Article nineteen, Berry Road Design Grant Match. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars and no cents to match the Berry Road Design Grant and to meet said appropriation by transfer of ten thousand dollars and no cents from infrastructure stabilization account. Submitted by the Select Board. Majority vote required.
And Holly, do you wish to comment?
No, we're going to have Graceland do that.
Okay.
Um, so in January this year, we received a partial grant award of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars from E O D's Rural Development Fund, and that will pay for approximately ninety seven percent of the three hundred thousand dollar engineering contract. Um, that is to rehabilitate rehabilitate all three point nine miles of Berry Road. Um, if it's approved, Article nineteen would incorporate ten thousand dollars from the infrastructure stabilization account. Um, pay for the remaining approximately three percent of that contract.
Right.
Are there any questions or comments for Graceland?
That has my complete support.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Great job, Grayson.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
So glad we have a grant writer. I am so, so glad. I really am.
So am I.
Me too.
Pretend this did that.
This is a wonderful.
I feel like when an employee pays for their own salary.
Many, many times over.
Many times.
That girl a raise.
Any further discussion of comments? You're set?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Article twenty?
I got that. Article twenty, exempt town administrative buildings from being a prohibited area for the possession of firearms. To see if the town will vote to exempt town administrative buildings or offices from being classified as a prohibited area for the possession of firearms under the provisions of Section one twenty four of Chapter one thirty five of the Acts of twenty twenty four as outlined in GLC two sixty nine, Section ten K two or take any other action related thereto. Submitted by the Select Board, majority vote required. Okay.
At this time, Mr. Curry, would you, were you present at the time the select board considered this? And do you wish to comment? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Supported the the chief who had brought it to us. When he came and made his presentation, we understood it.
Yep.
And can you can you summarize the rationale the chief gave? Because I have discussed this with the chief, and this is really for the, you know, the amount of the public.
Put me on the spot.
Yeah, it is. I am.
I'm sure I say, I don't know. I don't know if I can do it justice other than just, you know, rereading it. Just the Special Acts of twenty twenty four changed that language, and this is to catch up with that that language.
That's what, that's what I understand.
Yeah.
I did. I mean, I had a conversation, you know, with the chief about this because I hadn't, I hadn't seen the tape of the meeting and did have questions. And apparently, from the two hundred odd year history of the town, you know, the concealed carrier firearms have not been prohibited. And then with the recent act on the part of the legislature, it changed that to an option. It prohibited you know, firearms within administrative buildings, but it gave the individual cities and towns the option.
Right.
So my understanding from Chief Bennett is that Article twenty gives the town the option to essentially go back to the way that we were. Is that your understanding?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Plus, it makes it safer too. So, I mean, if there's a lot of people in this town that that do carry.
It's a lot.
Uh, yeah, and how safe would it be if we can't come in here, even though it's concealed and have to leave it in our car lock in a box and separate the ammo and it's just more of a but I understand the chief's perspective.
I I I gave huge weight to the chief's in my conversations with the chief. And I think the reason why is, well, actually, two reasons. I the Second Amendment was not an individual right until two thousand and eight, it was a hell of a decision. And the Massachusetts Legislature, you know, I looked at the process of the bill and it was really sliced and diced and really the people who had input, their input was really ignored and and I I just, as I said, I give great weight to what the chief said and I think, you know, to go back to the way it was, which has worked for over two hundred years. I have no problem with that. Any further questions or discussion?
Um, I just wanted to note that for budget reasons, it would be one less thing for our stressed, you know, very thinly spread police department to have to enforce if it passes.
I agree with that. Good point.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, the next Article twenty one, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of Article twenty one.
Still moved.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Glad it wasn't my turn anyway.
I did this, I did it on purpose.
I think it was actually John's turn.
No, it was no.
No, it was hers. I'm trying to protect the other lady.
Maybe, maybe it should have, maybe it should have been.
Stick together on this board.
All right, so this, for the purposes of having the record, who who made the motion? All right, so this uh for the purposes of um having the record, uh, uh, who who made the motion?
I did.
Julie.
And I seconded.
Seconded by John, okay. And uh, I'll just take a roll call vote, uh. Would?
Yes.
Waive the reading?
Yes.
Okay, exactly.
Yes.
And also vote yes. So Article twenty one, um, lengthy article, uh, basically in terms of uh. Floodplain overlay district. Uh, it'll take us all night to read this. Five pages long. I did, I I did um. Ask uh, Holly, can you give um, you know, the public and advisory just uh, what? What the article is about uh? Oh, okay, you're the resident expert?
I don't know quite.
If you could.
I can't.
Could you read the article for us, please?
I second that. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
No, I I, if you could.
I can't.
All right, what what I'd like you to do is um. If you just answer four simple questions and and the four questions would be. Uh. You know, why the need for the article and a little synopsis of what the article is about and how it benefits the town. If you could just comment on that.
I can.
Okay.
I can. So the reason for the article is is we were behind as far as floodplain management goes with D C R, FEMA. And um, the National Flood Insurance Program. So by instituting. The new language, it provides definitions. Of everything that has to do. That's why it's so long. It designates a floodplain administrator that can help residents. If they're building in a floodplain or if their insurance is really high. We can look at it and try and help them either with redesignation or at least contacting D C R. Um, we've been working closely with Katie Pate. Who is a flood management specialist through D C R. Both Jessica and I are training. Um. I've been designating the floodplain administrator.
So this is like an additional duty?
It is.
Another one that needs a raise.
It is.
Unfunded mandate?
Is that?
It is. It is. Most of the language is the same as the previous. Bylaw that we had. This just replaces it with the addition of those things and it does benefit the town to be in line with the state and the federal. Uh, wording, so.
Can I ask you two questions? I, this is very important is. Because I I I'm assuming that there are defined floodplain within the town of Templeton.
Yes, and they have not changed since nineteen eighty two.
And will this? Bylaws, only bylaw, change the size, you know, make the existing floodplain bigger or?
Not at this, no. No, the maps are right now still the same. If the state. Working with FEMA and D C R, if the floodplanes change, we have to. Through through a building permit application. If it's within the floodplain. It's already there. If we're trying to. Make a change, it's a very lengthy process. It gets filed with both FEMA and the National Floodplane. I'm sorry, National Flood Insurance Program. Um, so no, right now, everything is still the same.
And. This is really my main concern, you know, as a taxpayer or a resident is. Um. You know, you go to states like Florida, you know, and hurricanes on a regular basis and they have, you know, floodwater, you know, flood flooding issues. Uh, you know, we're we're lucky as a town. We haven't had a major flood probably since the hurricane of thirty eight.
Yeah.
Over eighty years ago, but uh, you know, what what concerns me is uh, will this, will this change or potentially change the amount of? Homeowners insurance that um, an individual resident may have to pay?
No. No, the whole point of it is is for future residents, for us to work with them. If they're building in a floodplain to control it. So we would give them. Information from an F I P. To be able to talk to them to get some information before making a decision on purchasing land where there could be floods. It's not gonna change anything that you're currently paying. Any taxpayer. And we all know flood insurance is very expensive.
Very, very expensive. Where you may not be able to get insurance at all.
Well, and that that that's the point of being prepared to. Counsel someone before they make a purchase or build. It also, uh, there's a couple of little things added in there um, that defines. People who. Already live in a flood zone. If you're securing, you've got to secure all terrain vehicles, things like that, so that it doesn't get washed away. Um. It it it's. More comprehensive than what we currently have.
Are there any questions or comments?
Well, we're gonna have a guide, I would assume, correct? When we're done with this, we'll have a guide for town meeting. Yeah. Is right, can we have a, is there a way you can get the copy of the floodplain in a small like? But do you attach for that article just so people can see that this?
You mean like a map?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. A map.
It's not small. And there's a lot of them.
Oh, disregard then.
But I can. A huge packet. What are you asking of what? The devil.
I just wanted to.
It's not gonna change the current floodplain.
Okay, all right.
I think basically, can you just correct me if I'm wrong? The state and the federal would like Templeton. To come into the times with their wording, correct?
Be in line?
Correct.
Gotta be in line, cuz nineteen eighty two, really? I get it.
I'm tracking now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in section M, it is all about the changes. Basically, the uh.
There's small changes. There's small changes.
Well, Lori Lori's office would have six months to even study the data before submitting any kind of changes is what the language requires about.
Okay.
You know, I I I was thinking about the unfunded mandate, the position, but i- is this something that really? Unduly burdens your present position?
It adds to the review of new building permits.
I think she said yes.
Just say yes.
Say yes.
Say yes.
Yes, it does.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussion before we move on?
Twenty two? Yes, that you or me?
It's me, I think. But I.
Was it sure?
I got skipped over for twenty one. Actually, do you mind if I read this one?
No, go ahead. Just a personal reason. Um, Gamma Opioid Services Agreement Payment.
Hmm.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one thousand. Two hundred eighty seven dollars and no cents from the opioid abatement stabilization fund. To pay the second year of the Town of Templeton Agreement with Gamma. A nonprofit organization having a principal location at two oh eight Coleman Street, Gardner, Mass. Or take any other action related there too submitted by the Board of Selectment, Select Board, sorry, majority vote required.
Uh, Holly, do you wish to comment?
Um, I I believe the townspeople probably are already aware of this. We had it on last year as well. Uh, well, this is the agreement that we have with Gamma. Uh, it's in with a bunch of other towns. Representatives Lotnick had contacted Adam when he first were awarded the opioid funds. And discussed with him that it would probably be a better use of the funds. If we did it all in a joint effort with surrounding towns instead of taking our small amount and trying to do something here. So they entered into that agreement and this is just the second year of of paying for that. Services are provided through them for Templeton residents.
Now, what what I wanted to ask you is the initial amount was in, you know, seven thousand dollars and some change and so why? I'm assuming that the opioid fund. Is it one thousand two hundred eighty seven dollars? Is that the entire amount of uh? Of that opioid uh, abatement stabilization fund or? Is some part of that being uh, you know, withheld for a future date?
No, the seven thousand four sixteen that was originally in there was the first year payment that was in there last year. And that was what was in the draft warrant to begin with and then we know. Several people noticed that we had the wrong amount in there. This is for the second year payment. So the first year where we give, we were given seven thousand four sixteen. From the the lawsuit, the class action lawsuit. Second year was one thousand two eighty seven, so that's what we have to contribute to the agreement.
And is this amount going to go down year after year?
Yeah, the third year is a little bit less, I believe. I think it's just over a thousand.
And at some point in time will that that money disappear?
Yes.
Yep.
And my my final question is, is some of that money going to Alyssa's place? You know?
No, Gamma administers the program. So it's just going to them.
But then do they parcel the money out to other? Other organizations other than Gamma?
I don't believe so, but I could check. I'll take a look at the agreement. It's actually, it's on the website too.
Okay.
Under the contracts. Is Alyssa's place local?
I just think.
Yeah, it's on.
And I I believe Gamma does support them.
Oh, okay.
Well, it does, okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any other uh questions, comment? Hey, Article twenty three, uh. Um, yes, oh, my turn. What's up, that one? So Article twenty three, Monticent Regional Vocational Technical School. Uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred thirty three thousand, six hundred six. Dollars and no cents as the amount assessed upon the town for. Fiscal year twenty twenty six, assessed by the Monticent Regional Vocational Technical School District. For the purposes of educating and transporting the town's enrolled students. And capital and debt experiences, expenses provided, however, that any stated amount shall be reduced to any lesser amount. Which shall subsequently be certified by the school committee and certified to the town. For fiscal year twenty twenty six or take any other action related there too. Submitted by the select board on behalf of the Monticent Regional Vocational Technical Schools, if the majority vote required. Is there anybody from uh Monty Tech here tonight?
Oh, no, I went there.
Uh, Holly, do you care to comment?
It's just this, their annual budget, their annual budget.
I think it was a little bit less than last year. Yeah.
It is be less.
And that just not.
It went down.
No. Do you have any idea why?
Lower enrollment. It went down by two students.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any further uh questions or comments from? Advisory?
Not this time.
Great.
Okay, there'll be no uh further questions. Uh, we'll go on to Article twenty four.
Article twenty four, Narragansett Regional School District, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of. Eight million, six hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred sixty five dollars and no cents. And to transfer one hundred sixty eight thousand, five hundred thirty, thirty four dollars and no cents. From certified free cash. What's reach a total of eight million, seven hundred eighty seven thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and no cents. For the purpose for educating and transferring the town's enrolled students, provide, however, that any state amount shall be reduced. To a lesser amount which shall subsequently be certified by the school committee and certified to the town for fiscal year twenty twenty six or take any other action there too submitted by the select board. Majority vote requires.
Okay, uh, is there anybody uh present from the Narragansett Regional School District who wishes to offer comments? Holly, do you wish to offer comments?
Sure. The original amount was about four hundred sixty six dollars. Um, more than the eight million, seven hundred eighty seven, ninety nine that's in the budget. Um, I think a few people noticed. The different number from the original warrant to this one. And that's just, it just came in a little bit lower with the certified assessment. Um, I know, um. Some of the, I I think for you, some of the meetings.
Uh, John was.
John was, okay.
Andrew Moser is no longer on advisory.
Andrew and um Mike Curry for the select board. They worked with. Doctor Cassavan. And some of the town administrators, I believe Adam was at some of those meetings too, and they really worked with them on the budget and the school. Did did some cuts so they could. Come in at the number that. We were offering them with that increased amount from. Part from free cash and part from increasing the more vehicle revenues. So we. Collectively as a group, got that number to work.
Mr. Curry, do you care to comment?
I will. Um, thanks, Holly. Um, I I don't like the way that we got to this number. Um, but we got to a number where the school. Committee voted for. The lower number and the town. Through the town administrator made good on its pledge to give it. Uh, uh. At least an amount over. Um. We we lost the bubble, you know, Jan- January and February were not great months for our town and uh leadership. Um, I I think that we could have done better. I think that we lost a lot, a lot in messaging. Um, we collectively, the group knew. That we we were a million short last year. We were gonna be a million short la- this year. So there was no surprise about that. It's how we were going to meet those obligations. And there was not enough collective. Agreement that this was going to uh take um, a major effort. An override or otherwise to be able to make up that difference. Um. The uh, the budget, uh, both the superintendent and his budget um, officer. Will tell you. It's not going to abate. This, just cut, making the cuts this year do not solve next year. They don't solve the year after that. Um, police station, the police chief said the same thing. He said, I might be able to do it this year. There's no way I can do it next year. Again, this, we meet out, we. We got by by the skin of our teeth. And and tried to understand. Our situation, but also listen to everybody. If their conversation wasn't ready. Yet to have an override or to to look for other sources of income. Whether it was stabilization or otherwise, we weren't, there wasn't enough. Probably the the bow I'll put on this, there wasn't enough. Momentum. To be able to make that happen. So this is the solution that we have. The school was able to accept it. We were able to give a very meager amount. Um. Guess that was a little, they're good.
I don't know if that was good.
Right. It it was a point home, right?
Right, definitely did, definitely did.
Like a rum, right?
I ju- I just wanted to point out, the school did point out that our obligation, you know how the state, we have a certain number, we are higher than their obligation. So we we didn't like. The town isn't bringing it down below for the school. We are meeting our obligation. To the school. It's not everything everybody wants, but you know what I mean? I don't want anybody to think that. We like, the town is like, not giving them their fair share. We are, and that's what Mr. Cassavan brought up to their board when they voted. He explained to them that it could go lower on the floor because we are in a higher level. Well, what we're giving them, what we're obligations. That's what he told them that night when I went to that meeting.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean. It's not their ideal number, you know? It's not everything that everybody needs cuz everybody's growing and there's so many more kids and so many more needs. But we are meeting our our our, what we're supposed to do. And then a little bit some, so.
You want to comment, Mr. Curry?
I I do. I I just, uh, just one rebuttal on uh what Candace said. So, you know. In the micro. View of what? She just said, but we were doing our obligation, right?
Mm hmm.
So. Select board said of the, all the budget meetings and um, one of the select board members said, I want to give up my my stipend because I want more money to go. To a development service employee because I think they deserve it. I think that they should get more. And that's the same kind of microcosm to say, sure, the town's got an obligation. To fund its education and we're doing that, but we also look at it to say, what can we do to make it better? They made the recommendations on doing the After Dark Program, um, the pathway to uh college, all of these things that. Um, the pathway to uh, college, all of these things that energize the kids. Energize the, the, the families or otherwise, uh, they've got to cut buses now. Because they've got to be able to make it work, the, there's no two, two-laced buses, I think it, I understand it's like one, and they have to make a couple of trips. So I, I don't think that's doing our obligation per, per se, I, I get, I get what you're saying. But if we have the opportunity to be able. To fund the school the way that they say is necessary for what their, what their. What their situation is, I, I think the town has it as. An obligation, an ethical obligation, not a, 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 not just a fiscal obligation.
We have that across the board with all our departments, even, we're losing people because of funding.
I think, uh, I think Candace on one aspect, what she's probably referring to is the net school spending and how that's supposed to calculate based on what the state requires, so the state requires us to pay X. And obviously, we've been paying the top end of net school spending, I know since at least twenty sixteen. Uh, suppose there was some type of punishment the town was getting because back in the day we were paying less. So, uh, the whole hell harmless thing, so we had to end up paying more, so. Um, if anybody, it's on paper, you can actually see it, it's about twenty million dollars is what net school spending requires in total. Uh, but obviously his budget was almost twenty-five million, so it was five million dollars over. The top end net school spending, which again, I'm not saying that's a need or he needs it, I'm not saying that, because my kids go there, my grandkids go there, so. Uh, abs- abs- I mean, we're all, the only constant thing in life is change, so I mean, you just gotta hang on for the ride. Unfortunately, because that's what life is all about, it's change, if you can't adapt to the change, then I don't. Then we're not gonna, we're not gonna go anywhere, just gonna keep spinning our wheels like you're in the mud. Um, but I think at the end of the day, I mean, the school committee did a great job. I, I know they were on their tough thing, I know there was like eight hundred thousand plus in cuts that, that Dr. Kazmit made. Uh, to come to the need of the town, which I thought was great. But like Mr. Curry said, it's not gonna take away next year of the one point five million that's gonna be required. It's not gonna take away the next year after that, which is gonna be about one point three million required. Uh, so if you look at just at the raises and the school did a great job by coming forward and providing. You know, a, a projection of what twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight's gonna look like. With that, with, with just stuff that they knew, like busing and contract fees and payments and stuff like that. Which is, you know, you're, they're looking at over four hundred thousand dollars next year just in, you know, the contracts, so. If you look at the paperwork and the, and the budget as itself, and you look at the slides that the school provides. I, I think the, the information is there, the problem is economics and with inflation and the way things are going, if we don't come to some type of. Hardcore discussion of where we're gonna go. Uh, it's gonna be a dissolution, I mean, I don't, I, I said to Holly today, so what's the difference between free cash and stabilization? What's the difference? It's one-time fi- it's, there's no difference, it's just a name difference, so use a one-time funding to pay for the school assessment. And you're gonna do this in, in a direct violation of your own policies. Uh, because you can't use one-time spending to offset your budget specifically like this. Again, Holly brought, well, we did it last year too, kinda like with the school, I said, yeah, we did take some out, we didn't take all, we did take some. To meet the capital need of the school, you're absolutely right, we did. You're absolutely right, we're not taking some, we're taking all. All out of free cash, not some, not a little bit, not, I think we were twenty percent. Um, so we have no capability of ordering, of getting any type of capital assets this year for our department heads. Because we're using the free cash to offset the budget. Uh, same things they did in twenty-ten, same things they did in twenty-eleven and twelve.
Thank you.
So this is, this is the road that we're going down. By offsetting your budget with free cash. Is not gonna get, because again, it's one-time funding, so what's gonna happen next year, where are you gonna get the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars if you're not gonna use? You have to fix your revenue stream, you're absolutely right, but how do you fix it? Who wants to get in the room with everybody else and talk about the revenue streams of where we are and how we need to get to, you're from A to B? You know, how are you gonna?
Actually, in twenty-twenty-one, we were starting to try to build a little momentum on a, on a two and a half override. So it's, it's frustrating to hear that the momentum wasn't there in twenty-twenty-five.
I think that those conversations, those hard conversations and talks need to happen. And um, because I'm not sure, and I hope that the next deal, the next elected group that comes in. Um, I'll let, our legislative body can come up with some great ideas and, and of revrow streaming. Um, you know, with, I mean, without increasing taxation, which I, I, nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to, you know, have different tax rates to offset commercial versus residential, nobody wants to do that. You know, but there's other, there's seventy-eight towns and cities that are doing overrides this year alone. Um, and that's on the DLS website, so, um. But I can't tell good thing too, I mean, I don't know if, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share that, I'll put this in the record for the, for, because it's about the school, uh, DLS web. Came out today, uh, it was pretty, it was pretty promising, uh, as far as dollars that are. Have increased, uh, which was pretty significant to the school, so obviously, I hope that will also help. You know, Dr. Kazmit's cause as well, but anyways, that's all I have to say.
I would also like to note that, you know, there's. Talks about adding other districts or removing districts or any of these things, but none of these things can happen because the current. Regional school um, agreement is non-existent, so. If these things are gonna happen, which need to happen like, you know, months ago, in the wayback time machine. Um, we need to really iron out and spend time and people need to focus on getting this regional school agreement. Signed and. And, and everybody agreed upon because. Nobody's gonna entertain anything that we might throw out there, no school district is even gonna entertain what we could offer because. It's like a laughing stock.
I, and I, again, I don't want to take anything from Jackie, because you know, you know, I, I think Jackie's right on target, I mean, obviously, we do have an agreement though. Let's, let's, the facts are the fact, we do have an agreement. It goes, it goes back, I mean, they, they talked about the nineteen-seventy-one agreement that was, uh, wasn't approved by Desi, they talk about. These different things that are accumulating into what we have today, where we now, we have a solid agreement. Um, the issue that happened on the floor that a couple of years ago, that there was a verbiage change that people wanted to change. That sh- I, I, that shouldn't have happened, but it did. It, it lingered, it stalled, uh, we re- re-energized it, went back to Desi. Because we felt it needed to go back since those changes happened, it was now became a working document versus a signed document that the board of selectmen signed. And it went to the people for vote and it was voted in with a minor change. They took it as an agreement changed one, and they brought it back to Desi, Desi did see it, Desi legal saw it, it came back to the school committee. School committees, there was no, that Desi said that there was no legality issues, uh, it was, it was, it was okay. Uh, whatever change that Templeton had on the floor, it, it met the standards for Desi's language and Desi legal, so went back to the school committee, they signed it. Dr. Kazmit sent out to these both boards of selectmen, uh, select boards, excuse me, uh, for Phillipston and Templeton. Uh, un- unfortunately was sent after Phillipston's. Uh, board of, uh, select board meeting, uh, a town meeting happened, so it was, it was sent after that, so. Uh, either they have to have a special town meeting to work on that document alone, or they're gonna wait until their fall town meeting. Um, to, to hopefully entertain it, I'm hoping. Uh, they have the opportunity to entertain it, because at this point right now, the only changes that were in that document were the name changes of the buildings. Uh, because again, they had East Templeton, Balderville, Templeton Center School, which all those schools no longer exist. Um, and Templeton Center, or the new Templeton Elementary School is there in the place of. The Templeton Center School, but that was one of the biggest changes with the names and some insurance monies. Um, so it really wasn't like a huge change. Uh, so it's up to the Phillipston town folk to hopefully sign the agreement. Um, I, I think it's important, uh, I know as the advisory committee, we sent recommendations to the select board already. Uh, concerning a potential demand letter concerning that document that needs to be signed and documented. Uh, and, and I, you know, and it has to come from town legal, uh, because otherwise Desi's not gonna get involved. The school, school committee can't get involved because they're kinda like the middle people. Uh, and, and they shouldn't get involved, this is a town-to-town responsibility. And I think the select board have an obligation, and I think hopefully the new elected body that comes in, they can take this pretty seriously.
Yeah, I've been attending the subcommittee meetings with this, with the school committee all year and. Um, it's a matter of saying that Desi has never seen anything like this before.
Nope.
This is unprecedented, um, and they kind of don't really have any advice one way or the other. Um, but it has been noted that nobody's gonna entertain anything with us about. Creating a super school district or anything of that sorts with the current mess of the situation.
Well, there was, the school didn't take the vote on our amendment. So that even in Phillipston, that they were supposed to, so the other, when I went to that, the last meeting that they had with the budgets and. They talked about all that stuff, they took a vote, they had to take the vote, was it twice or three times, because it was a problem when they took the vote the first time. It was like a rule, like somebody, you know, with a form and everything, so they did it again, but if you go back and watch the footage. Of one of their budget hearings recently, they took a vote, had to accept our amendment.
Who's they?
The school board.
The school committee?
The school committee.
Okay.
They, they, cap- Mr. Ca- Dr. Cassavan pointed out that they had never taken the vote to accept. The school committee had never taken the vote to accept our amendment on the floor. Even though it came back and forth, they had never done it.
Okay.
So now that's done, so now if we talk, now the two, you know, our town, Phillipston, now we're back where we started again, where they get a. You know, they got a vote on it.
Yeah, because we already did it.
Right, we already did, but they, I guess there was a step that they were supposed to vote on, the school committee was supposed to vote on our amendment as well to accept it as well. And they just did it, they had, they made a mistake, or we see, justice sat there, they made a mistake, then they had, they realized it was a problem, they had to take the vote again because. It wouldn't have been legal.
I understand, well, like I said, Mr. Chan, my only concern now is gonna be utilization of one-time funding. As it's always gonna be, as, as the financial people that were supposed to be responsible for these, these dollars, um, and. I mean, what's one-time funding, so I mean, it's, you, you, you know, you use it today, I got it, I got it. I mean, because again, if you're stuck, like we did last year, we offsetted their budget a little bit with utilization of stabilization, which again, we try to. You know, the town's working with our partners in the school district to make sure that they get what they need, because our children need these, their education. Um, but one-time funding is not the way to go. This is not, this is just, this is, if we don't do something, it's gonna set the town up for failure, without a question in my mind.
It's bringing us back to two thousand ten and two thousand fifteen when they were breathing down our necks to, to have the state step in.
Yeah, if I may, uh. Everybody had a chance to comment, I, I'd just like to offer a couple of closing comments, um, and then go on, uh. First closing comment is about the cherry sheet that, um. John presented. His next year, the problem is for the town, on the town side, is going to be far worse. And the reason why it's going to be far worse is that the state increased funding. To uh, regional school districts by, I believe, four percent. But they level funded, uh, the uh, local aid for the municipal side of the budget. And what that means is that the foundation budget is going to go up. And it's gonna be further compounded by the last year of the Student Opportunity Act, so. The, the ask is going to be probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars greater than it was. This year, just to get to the minimum amount. And, and that's the only point that I want to make is that, uh. You can't kick the can down the road anymore, we've run out of road and, uh. I, you know, I have talked to Representatives Lotnick about modifying the Student Opportunity Act, which might bring three or four hundred thousand dollars to the town. Uh, that's just speculation and I, I doubt he'll be able to help the town. So the town on the municipal side is going to be in a worse position next year than it was. Uh, for the, the present fiscal year, and uh, the other issue as well is that Dr. Kazivan can cut year after year. But uh, he went through this in Gardner where, after four or five years of cutting. There was literally a sudden mass exodus of schools, schoolchildren to other school districts. Um, which just compounded the problem, uh, for Gardner where he was. And I've said this before, I'll say it again, it took Gardner over fifteen years to dig themselves. Out of that hole and uh, we're, we're really headed for that hole. You all say?
Uh, I just wanted to say that I'm, your concern of mass exited students, I thought you were gonna say of staff.
That too, that could happen as well.
Yeah.
That could happen as well, you could end up.
They're pretty tight.
That's why. Okay, um. Okay, I'm gonna go on to Article twenty-five. Uh, Norfolk County Agricultural School tuition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum. Of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and no cents. To pay for the tuition of a Templeton resident. Admitted to Norfolk County Agricultural School as required by chapter seventy-four of the Massachusetts General Laws. And take any other action related there too, submitted by the select board, majority vote required. Uh. I, I believe that the article speaks for itself, uh, does anybody in the room wish to offer comment?
The student is a junior?
Yeah.
Think so.
Yeah, we're lucky there's one and not ten.
That's great.
The Article twenty-six, uh, Norfolk County Agricultural School Transportation, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum. Of forty-six, forty-five thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and no cents. To pay for the transportation of a Templeton resident. Admitted to Norfolk County Agricultural School as required by chapter seventy-four of the Massachusetts General Laws. Or take any other action related there too, submitted by the select board, majority vote required. Again, uh, I believe that this article, Article twenty-six, um, speaks for itself as written, uh, does anybody wish to comment at this time?
It's gotta pass.
It has to pass, yes. Okay, Article twenty-seven is a citizen's petition. Uh, by tradition, advisory does not take a, uh, a position. Now on this, uh, first I would ask, uh, for a, uh. Motion to waive the reading of Article twenty-seven.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Take a roll call vote Julie?
Yes.
Go on.
Yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. I would like to read this and enter it into the record, uh, this is an email I received from, uh. Rachel Herman, uh, she's, uh. Uh, very involved in the uh, Community Against Toxic Ways and was involved in organizing the special town meeting. And. She graciously sent me, uh, email, um, this email. Uh, she, she just is very uncomfortable, uh, you know, speaking in public, uh, for. Uh, you know, for various reasons, and so to accommodate her, I asked her to submit an email to me. So, uh, her statement, I will read, uh, what are the articles about? First, both articles, uh, she's talking about Articles twenty-seven and twenty-eight. First, both articles are identical except that one applies to. C I A, Commercial Industrial Agricultural Zoning, and one applies to C I B. Commercial Industrial Business zoning. The intention of the articles is to follow through on the solid waste bylaw and moratorium. Unanimously passed at last December's special town meeting. Zoning is a powerful tool residents can use to make their voices heard. But they're, um, what they are about is prohibiting activities related to a commercial fuel. Production and processing, because this is a dirty, disruptive and dangerous activity. Notice that the two paragraphs of definition of regulated technologies involves, quote, any step of commercial energy production. Unquote, or, quote, in the process of fuel production, unquote. The articles as appearing on the warrant, Articles twenty-seven and twenty-eight, are not clear enough to be effective by law. Change of the language on the town meeting floor is expected to make them clear and effective measures. That protect the health and welfare of residents. Number two, a brief description of any proposed amendments you may plan to offer, that was my question, uh, to Rachel, and she responded by saying that. Proposed change of language removes confusing extra words so that the meaning of the bylaws will be very clear. You will be prohibited in all parts of town to take part in production of energy or fuel on a commercial scale. Uh, the third question that she responded to, why are the wa- are the warrant articles in the best interest of the town of Templeton to pass? And her response, uh, was making fuel using high heat, incineration and other methods is a dangerous activity. It directly threatens the health, safety, quality of life and property values. It is unstable, unreliable and detracts from the town's long-term need. For clean businesses, offering good employment opportunities and a stable tax base. Residents vote, voted against this kind of thing at twenty-twenty-four's May town meeting and the December special town meeting. Residents do not want polluting businesses ruining their air, water and quiet enjoyment of their neighborhoods. Residents are against giant tanks of flammable. Pyrolysis oil, naphtha or hydrogen gas and piles of combustible or toxic materials. Brought in to burn in their neighborhoods, and that is, uh, the statement, uh, by, uh, Rachel Herman. Uh, I'm going to enter this into, uh, the record for, uh. Yes, it's probably right here, I'm gonna enter this into the record of this meeting so that, uh, you know, any taxpayer wishes to. Yes, it's probably right here. I'm going to enter this into the record of this meeting so that, uh, you know, any taxpayer wishes to uh. Review the meeting can do so and read her statement. At this time, I'm considering article twenty-seven, uh. Does uh. Does anybody uh wish to uh speak uh in favor of uh? Or or speak in general on article twenty-seven? Anybody wish to be heard? And does any member wish to be heard at this time?
No, okay.
All right, then, there being uh no additional comments, I will move on to article twenty-eight. And uh, what I would like to do is at this time, uh, because uh. It's also kind of a lengthy uh. A lengthy citizen petition, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading.
So moved. Second, we don't, we don't act on any citizens' positions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, and roll call vote Julie?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes, uh, so let's waive the reading, uh. And again, uh, I will, uh, is there any uh discussion, uh, you know, from the floor or? Or by members, any questions or discussion? Uh, again, uh, the uh statement submitted by Rachel Herman is for article twenty-eight as well. And again, this would be a position, uh, a petition that traditionally advisory would not take any position on because it's a citizen petitions. Uh, article twenty-nine, uh, the citizens petition. Uh, to amend, uh. Three hundred, uh, section three hundred dash ten. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the following new section. Three hundred dash ten point A, uh, in parentheses, ten with regard to allowed uses in the R A one district. And the section ten would be the indoor or outdoor storage of vehicles and plows owned or operated by mass DOT or. Subject to site plan approval under section three hundred dash thirty-two. The indoor or outdoor storage of vehicles and plows used in conjunction with a contract for services with mass DOT. Delivering of state highways, whether as a principal or accessory use. Or what we'll do in relation there too, submitted by citizen petition. Uh, two-thirds vote required. Um, again, uh. This, uh, I believe it was the same group of citizens that submitted this article. Uh, but it is not, oh, I'm sorry, uh, would you care to comment?
Sure, it was actually submitted by a gentleman that lives on Brooks Road.
I'm sorry, I. Uh, we were confused. Could you, could you uh describe the history of how this?
Um, yes, there was an appeal. To the zoning board for a special permit for large vehicles to be operated out of a residential. Property on Brooks Road and the Z B A did not support it, the. Gentleman appealed it through court. That's currently. Still in motion. And he actually, I'm not sure if an attorney wrote it or if he wrote it. Um, but it did go, it was reviewed. By the planning board. Because it's zoning and their recommendation was unanimous to not support it. Because it becomes spot zoning.
So this, there's still litigation pending.
Right.
Would the outcome of, say, say the citizen wins in court, would this affect, how how, do you know how this might affect this warrant article?
I don't know the answer to that. I think that would be. That's coming before, obviously, the outcome. I I I think it's a replacement for.
Negative outcome. On the part of the resident?
On the part of the resident, he's looking for a positive outcome. Because it would solve the problem for him.
Circumvent the course. Well, the Attorney General probably gets a cut at it once the, you know, if it. If it passed, then the Attorney General's office would look at it.
Correct.
And what might the?
And they may say that's spot zoning.
Would they, would, is it probable that the Attorney General may reject it because of his spot zoning? Or is that speculation?
That's a possibility. They're going to look at that zone.
Anything is possible these days.
Again, it's a citizen's petition, so that's clear.
So so it sounds like when it gets on the floor, somebody's going to raise the issue of it's still in litigation, it's still in court, we should.
I don't know that that can be brought up, but. The planning board made recommendations on all the citizens' petitions and are resupplying that, yes, okay.
Do you think a member of the planning board will be present?
Oh, yeah.
I do.
Also do I. And you'll be very boisterous.
And we shouldn't give much time to this because.
No.
We're not going to vote on it anyway tonight, and my time's precious, sorry.
Thank you.
Jesus.
Leap, leap. All right, any further discussion? Thank you, thank you for expressing, uh.
No, it would have been very odd if it was the same as her. When it said, wow, they're in the snow park.
No, I I did not look at the tape of the meeting and I just looked, it was.
Right.
That's supposed to. Okay. At this time, make the motion to close the pretown meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll for vote Julie?
Yes.
Done?
Any? No, no other discussion? No.
We all want to close it, it sounds like.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, John. Thanks, Lauren. Thank you very much. I guess that you don't want to hear the votes? I'm sure you will.
Yes, you too, Mike. Take care.
You're going to take a mo- a vote on each of the articles?
I'm good, do you want me to sign?
Okay, where are we?
Not to take a vote on this.
Yes.
Do you have, do you have your ready, ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go through uh the articles one by one, uh, with a roll call vote on each. Are you ready, Jack?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, and we're gonna go from Julie to John and to Jack and myself, so. Uh, article one, the Lake Bill. Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Yes.
I abstain. And the article two. Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
That one?
Yes.
I vote yes. Article three, Julie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article four. Julie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article five, Julie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article six. Julie?
Yes.
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 Way to go, Matt, revive.
Article seven? Julie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article eight?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, article nine, Julie?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Article ten?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Article eleven?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Article twelve?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Article thirteen?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article fourteen?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article fifteen?
No.
Yes.
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 Do you want the reason for the no?
It would be uh the stipulation on the select board members. If you would want that reasoning, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the only reason, by the way.
Yep.
Thank you for mentioning that because I know the.
I don't want people to want things regularly.
They thought it last time too.
Yes.
Yeah, you got that noted.
That one, okay, all right.
Can you just read it back for uh?
Um, article fifteen is one no and three yeses, and it's because of the stipulation for the select board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Uh. Article sixteen?
Yes.
Julie? Yes.
Yes.
I abstain. Article seventeen, Julie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article eighteen, the tanker lease.
Yes.
John? Article eighteen, the tanker lease.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Article nineteen?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article twenty, Julie?
Uh, yes.
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 And I also vote yes. Article twenty-one, the floodplain overlay district?
Yes.
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 Yep, we're on twenty-two.
Okay, uh, article twenty-two, uh, the opioid services agreement, Julie?
Yes.
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 And I also vote yes. Article twenty-three, uh, Monty Tech? Julie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Article twenty-four, an arrogance of regional school district, Julie?
I'm going to vote no due to the fact it's coming from certified free cash.
Okay, John? You want a minute?
Yep, can, sure, sure, all right, uh, we'll go to article twenty-five, uh, Julie? No, we already started with twenty-four.
Oh, we gotta, you have to finish that, okay.
I'm going to vote yes, but. I concur with the, uh, with Julie as far as a certified free cash utilization, it's just going to put us in a. A a bad situation next year, it gets us by this year, like, like Mr. Curry said, by the skin of our teeth, and literally by the skin of our teeth. And it's not going to be good come next year, so.
You know, the tough, very tough. Jack?
Yes.
I vote yes, but very reluctantly, yes, the reasons that John gave. Very reluctant. Article twenty-five, Julie?
Yes.
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 Article twenty-six, Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. And then article twenty-seven, uh, which traditionally tells no position. Do I need a roll call vote?
No.
Okay, and also article twenty-eight, no position. And article twenty-nine, no position. So at this time, I would enter uh a motion to adjourn from the pretown meeting.
Well, before we do, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that our, our responses are going to be sent to, obviously, the. Select Board's office to be incorporated into their, uh, their user, their guide. Uh, for town meeting, correct?
Uh, what I, I've discussed this with Holly and uh. Jacklin, our very able clerk, uh, we're going to work together to put this together within one business day tomorrow and. I'm, I am hoping that, uh, by late tomorrow or early Thursday, that Holly will have, uh, the recorded votes.
What I'm asking, Mr. Chair, is this is going to be one document, we're not going to have a, a sec- a second document that's our own. It's going to be one concise document, correct?
One concise document, um. It was just a, was just a tally of the votes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I believe a reason for Julie's no vote is, I I think that'll come out if, you know, folks review the, uh. You know, the meeting, but basically it'd be the twenty-nine articles, uh, it'd just be very quick, probably one page, you know. What it is, uh.
Understood.
And if it's okay with everybody else signing this chair for us, um, you know, the.
Expedite.
You know, expedite, I really want it done by late tomorrow or early Thursday.
It sounds good, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna work on it in the morning. I want it done too.
I'm sure you do. Thank you for your help.
So, so with that, uh, on a motion to adjourn, do I have a motion and a second?
Yeah, uh, so moved.
Second, second, okay, and uh, I'll roll call it, Julie?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Backline?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Who, any, before we adjourn, do any members wish to?
We already adjourned, Mr. Chair. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Something else. I thought we were leaving.
No, just kidding.
That's a sick joke. Funny.
Do you, you wish to offer any further comments?
No, I don't have any further comments tonight. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody that came. Thanks for hopefully watching at home. Um, and hopefully they can take something away from this and, um, and I would hope to see everybody at town meeting. Um, to do their, their duty and their responsibility in the town. Thank you.
I have one quick comment, uh, is, uh. I believe very much in continuity of government. And we've had turnover and turnover is bad. All you have to do is look to Winchman. They've had turnover for years and, uh, they they've had, uh, they they've reached the fruits of constant turnover. Uh, I am, um. Very concerned that our interim town administrator, Holly Young, uh, at this point. Seven weeks into her position, does not have a contract. And I, I thought in my mind, uh, it should be a no-brainer that, uh. A no-brainer that she'd be just offered a contract ba- with basically the same terms and conditions of what Adam worked under. And. And, uh, and pay, uh, Adam, very close to what Adam was being paid. Uh, her pay was booted a little bit, but, uh, I think that the pay. On, probably eighty-eight thousand dollars a year, so. It's unwarranted. I just offer this not to criticize the select board, but I think it is in the best interest of the town. That the Select Board Act forthwith to, uh, offer Holly a contract. Um, under the same terms and conditions that Adam enjoyed. And also that it be for an amount of, um, at least a hundred and five thousand dollars, you know, to do this forthwith. Uh, it could be for a short term, uh, you know, maybe just for three months or six months, but, uh, she needs a contract and it is unfair for her to work.
Mr. Chair, may I recommend that you put that on the, the next meeting agenda so we could have a further, um.
Yes, I'm. I'm starting for, you know, for the public and, uh. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You, did everybody make comments?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, uh, this time I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Julie?
Yes.